Morning, everybody. Welcome to County Commission Meeting. Santa Rosa County Board of Commissioners for May 6, 2013. It's nine o'clock. Chairman Bob Cole and we'll go ahead and get the meeting started. I'm gonna start with a short prayer and then ask that we all rise after the prayer for a pledge of allegiance. Dear Lord, we thank you for the blessings of life. We thank you for breath every day. Lord, thank you for our military, our leaders, those that look after us every day, Lord. Lord, and we just thank you. Remind us today that we're just stewards over that, that you give us dominion on, and we ask for your guidance of all things. We pray in Jesus' name. Amen. All right. All right, if you all please put your communication devices on, vibrate or turn them off, please. So we do that as a reminder for all of us up here also. We're gonna start this morning with economic development. As soon as I ask if there's any additions to today's agenda, I'll start to my left with Commissioner Lynch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to just provide a brief update on Senate Bill 1024 that we discussed at our last meeting, our concerns surrounding the Restore Act, and give everyone an update and let you know how the session ended.
All right, where would you like to place that, sir?
If we can do that at the end of the Administrative Committee, it'll be fine.
All right, that'll be item number 12. Mr. Melvin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Actually, I have three items this morning. I have a resolution I'd like the Board to consider, and then relative to that resolution, a letter, and then I want to talk about signage on Navarre Beach. Three items.
All right, we'll add them as 13, 14, and 15.
Thanks, sir.
Commissioner Solder.
No additions, Mr. Chairman.
And Commissioner Williamson.
No changes, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anything from staff? All right, let's go into Economic Development Committee. Commissioner Solder.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have three items this morning. First one is discussion of designating Shannon Ogletree as Economic Development Director, and at this time, I turn that over to Mr. Walker since he has gone through the interviewing process. So, Mr. Walker.
Mr. Chairman, in your pocket was the memo from me regarding the recruitment that we have done in the last four months on the Economic Development Director position. You see that we'd interviewed 48, or we'd received 48 applications in conjunction with the Executive Search Firm. We've gone through the process of between, I used the county attorney and the Public Human Resources Director regarding my staff looking at those with me, also used the Executive Search Firm trying to review applications, review resumes, get to some list that we would interview. I had interviewed, there were four candidates that were out of state that we set up interviews. Again, after some lengthy process, we interviewed three candidates locally. The whole time we've gone through, we've been operating the Economic Development Department or Division for eight months now, I believe, eight or nine months, and getting it stood up, following what the Board asked us to do, and that's what we've done. I'm not trying to short-circuit any process at all. I'm just telling you, we've reviewed, I've reviewed the applicants. My recommendation is Shannon Ogletree, who has been the interim Economic Development Director. I outlined the process, I outlined what my thoughts were, you know, in the two-page document, Mr. Ogletree's interaction with the large stakeholders, with the chambers, and trying to establish some kind of small business effort, and most importantly, the work as far as creating jobs and working through processes to create jobs, and then the success that we've had in that. My recommendation is to, what the Board would be, to approve an Employment Services contract with Mr. Ogletree for those positions, for that position. The memo is pretty straightforward. I mean, I don't...
I agree with Mr. Walker. I've been very pleased with Shannon's work and progress over the last eight, 10 months. 10 months ago, I wasn't sure if he was the right person or not, but since he was put into that lead role, I think he's done an outstanding job. I see this selection process no different than Mr. Walker's, any of his other direct reports. Once we moved Economic Development in-house, and the executive director will report directly to the county administrator, then we've got to allow him to do his job. So, my position is that we approve that recommendation, and let's move forward. I'll open it up this time for further discussion. Commissioner Williamson.
Mr. Chairman, I agree that Shannon has done a great job, and I have no problems whatsoever with Shannon, but my problem is I think that we should have had a public interviews with the top candidates and some input or feedback from the Commission. I think we've had so much controversy over Team Santa Rosa, which was at that time our contractor, that the main reason, I think, that we got rid of Team Santa Rosa was they were not doing the job that we expected of them, plus there was no accountability. I do agree that there will be accountability now because under the process, either if whoever the Economic Development Director is doesn't do his job, then Mr. Walker would be the one that would hire or fire him, and of course, we could have input on that, and then there's accountability with Mr. Walker. But I'm sort of disappointed on the way it came down. I really expected more input from the Commission, and only because I just didn't want there to be any input priority at all in this selection process. I'm just a little confused. I understand that Mr. Walker does the hiring and firing, but during the process, I thought that we would be involved, or at least we would hear from the top candidates in a public meeting, and then make the selection. And like I say, I have no problem with the job that Mr. Ogletree has done, but I just have a problem with the way the process has gone through.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Melvin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I pretty much echo what Commissioner Williamson has said. My only concern, and I share everybody's confidence in Shannon, he's done an outstanding job for the rapid pickup he did and what he's done for Santa Rosa County since that point in time. The short notice and the fact that, you know, the decision was made startled me. I was surprised. I, like Commissioner Williamson, had expected that we would meet, we, this elected Board, would meet with the last three to five candidates, and I was caught off-guard by that and surprised. It may just be that I'm the novice on the Board, but that was my expectation.
Commissioner Lynch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I support the decision with regard to Shannon Ogletree. I think during this process, Mr. Walker has interviewed seven candidates, four from out of the area, three within the area. Our local hiring ordinance states that the county administrator hires department heads subject only to confirmation by the Board. That's exactly the process that we're doing now. I think Shannon has a proven track record over the past eight or nine months, I guess. He has really, I think, stepped up to the plate. He's done a great job. I've met and spoken with the people who are out there trying to create jobs in Santa Rosa County, the people who are trying to bring industry to the county, the people who are investing millions of dollars in our county, and to a person, they've all said that Shannon Ogletree has been pivotal in their decision to locate in Santa Rosa County, or pivotal in trying to lure businesses into Santa Rosa County. So I would support the hiring of Shannon as our permanent Economic Development Director.
Thank you, Commissioner Cole. Chairman Cole.
Thank you. I paid attention, listened to what all my fellow commissioners said, and I've told Shannon all along that I really didn't think, eight, nine months ago, he would be the voice or the person I'd want out front for Santa Rosa County. Over that eight months, I felt like he had an important role in the county, but perhaps not the Director. He has certainly stepped up to the plate, changed any doubt that I've had, and I support Hunter Walker's decision, and I will support confirming Shannon's contract.
All right, this time, we'll take any public input. Name and address, please.
Good morning, Jerry Cooley, 6049 Arnie's Way. You'll have to excuse me for my voice. The sinus finally got me this weekend. I want to congratulate the Board of County Commissioners for making great strides in the last eight or 10 months. A 5-0 vote to remove the previous organization that was running Economic Development, and I've seen a lot of positive changes that have occurred. However, I still have some concerns about how this is being handled. It is utmost that we do everything in a transparent manner. There's been problems within our county. There's certainly been problems within Okaloosa, Walton, Nantoskamy County on this kind of stuff. And of course, I've listened, I see that the vote is 3-2. That's fine. I still believe that the Commissioners should interview these. And one of my great concerns, and, you know, I'm sorry, we all know what was in the newspaper, but this candidate that has been put forward this morning, at least one other staff member knew that there was paperwork that was not handled correctly, and that grants were allocated that were improper. That was in the newspaper. We know that. I think this employee needs to be asked those questions in this interview process, and it is my belief that the Commissioners, I certainly disagree with Mr. Walker. I understand the pecking order, just as I have told Mr. Walker. This is a very large decision, a very large decision, that has a great, and there's a lot of people watching this decision. It is my belief the Commissioners need to participate in this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your input. Next. Name and address.
Wallace Mahoot, 5500 Cox Road, Milton, Florida. I was wondering if you could tell me, how much has been spent on the firm to recruit applicants for the position of Economic Development Director so far?
Fifteen to fifty.
Mardon.
Fifty thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars.
Fifteen thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars.
That's correct.
Where did those funds to pay for this come from? Taxpayers?
That's the only funds we have.
Okay, so the taxpayers have put out over fifteen thousand dollars to facilitate this process so far?
And they did.
Right. As Hunter Walker stated in his memorandum of May 2, 2013, there were seven viable applicants who were knowledgeable and experienced in a variety of economic development positions. There was an intent to schedule a second round of interviews with three finalists from this group, and then make the recommendation. That was the intent. I asked the Board to continue to stay on track with the purpose and intent of the original endeavor to seek the best possible candidate for this position. Give the process a chance. Do not quit before the process has been given the opportunity to produce the result you're looking for. In my opinion, Santa Rosa County needs and deserves an Economic Development Director who possesses the ability to think outside the box, to realize and implement business practices which will enhance and vitalize the precious quality of life which is abundant in the county. The recent Board efforts of protecting the public drinking water sources provided by our outstanding aquifers, which are also in the industrial area, are an example of why the right person for this position will realize that these kinds of protections can coexist with industry, and will be able to see these efforts as an asset, and not condemn them as a detriment to future economic development. Santa Rosa County can become not only a major tourist destination, but should also become a magnet for industry willing to protect, nurture, and enhance our area's natural quality of life assets. I ask you to continue with the process and the original intent to find the best Economic Development Director in a transparent manner. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the intent, I was the one that was gonna conduct the interviews if I thought there needed to be a next step. Like the ordinance sets up the county administrative position, I make a recommendation to you. My intent was if I needed to sit down with people individually, I spent over an hour on the phone with each of these applicants that were out of town. I spent over an hour with each of the local people that interviewed. We went over countless hours in reviewing applications, reviewing qualifications, and going through the process. The reason that we used the Executive Search Firm was specifically to make sure that we could attract good candidates, and as we're going through the vetting process and the process of evaluating economic development talent, if you will, that I'd have their competence and expertise, and that was their function. They weren't gonna make a selection. You know, they were gonna give input with my senior staff in how to deal with this particular position. I don't know how we, there's not a framework to go, I mean, we don't have a mechanism that the Board interviews people in. The Board interviews the county attorney and the county administrator and makes those decisions. I'm responsible to do the day-to-day stuff.
Next, please.
Alan Isaacs in 4395 Wintersgate Circle. Like Mr. Cooley, I can count the votes, and maybe what I say today is not gonna matter, but as one of the largest advocates for openness and accountability for the county, I'd be remiss if I didn't say something. I heard Mr. Lynchard say that he was satisfied with the candidate's ability, but what I haven't heard is whether any of my Commissioners have actually seen even the resumes for the other four candidates to tell me that he is the most qualified. I didn't hear that, and I didn't see it in the backup documentation, so I'm assuming there's a good possibility that they haven't. As I spoke to my Commissioner last week, he had not, so I'm assuming some of the rest may not have seen it either. So to say that he's a viable candidate, Mr. Lynchard, I would agree, you might be able to say that. To say that he's the best candidate, I'm not so confident that you could say that if you've not, you know, thoroughly looked at the other resumes. I think at least that should have been done, and maybe by Thursday, since the vote will take place on Thursday, that maybe the other resumes could be looked at, and then maybe you would still have the same opinion, and that's certainly your right as one of our County Commissioners. Where I'm mainly concerned, though, is going forward, I want to ensure that accountability to the taxpayers is the utmost importance. At the very least, if we have a zoning issue, we have regulations that Mr. Walker's office is governed by. We have statutes that govern certain things that the county has come up, criteria. One of the things we established several years ago was a report card that would have been due this month on what did we spend last year, and what did we get as that result. As of today, I have not seen that report. Maybe it is available. I've not seen it. That's another thing I would look at because this individual was our recruiter during that timeframe. Another question I have today is if you're moving our recruiter, which you say has done a great job, and perhaps he has, but if you're moving him out of that position into heading Economic Development, are we then gonna go out and hire a recruiter to mainly concentrate on getting businesses in here? Or are we gonna continue with the two-man? I'm not hearing these discussions going on, and so that would be my question. Are we gonna go out with yet another resume process to replace the recruiter position, or is that gonna be combined into, you know, an all-inclusive? I've not heard those type of discussions. But my main concern, and one that I spoke with my Commissioner on, was we did have an employee of Team Santa Rosa admit in the paper that official minutes of Team Santa Rosa that was given over to this county and became an official part of our county record had been falsified, and that staff members were knowledgeable of that falsification. I'm reluctant to have anyone heading up our Economic Development Agency that possibly would not have had the integrity at the time to come forward and say, "We have an issue," because had that been done, then I would not have had to put all the process I did in trying to expose what I thought was corruption. At least on that part, I was proven correct by one of the employees that testified, both to the FBI and into the local papers, that falsified documents were created. Once again, this process needs to be as open as it can be, and I'm very concerned that if you at least don't even look at the resumes, then you cannot attest that he is the best candidate moving forward. Perhaps he would be the best recruiter heading forward, and I've told my Commissioner I have no issue with that. But to head up Economic Development, I would like to make sure we have the best person, and I'm not opposed to Shannon Ogletree staying on the county payroll. I've told him that, and I've told my Commissioner that. I'm concerned, though, whether he is the right candidate to ensure that Economic Development going forward is as open and as committed as I would expect it to be. And at the very least, I would ask our Commissioners to, let's set some guidelines that Hunter Walker and his office has to be governed by dealing with just Economic Development, and I would lend my support to at least helping with that, to come up with some reporting and requirements and things like that, so we make sure when we're putting millions of dollars in the future forward, that we have some guidelines. Just giving it over to an administrator that is extremely busy by his own comments before, I'd like to see some guidelines like we do have with, like zoning issues and things like that. So that's my comments.
Thank you. And one of the things that we had talked about several months ago, we didn't want to get too much into organizational structure, what the new program was gonna look like until we made a decision on who that was gonna be, and then that would give that person and Mr. Walker the ability to sit down and start to put together the new organization, hopefully build that business input committee, if you will. So this is just the first step in rebuilding the organization. So, any other comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Melvin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make one final comment on this matter. When I saw the agenda Thursday, when it was made available via email to me, it's no secret, I was surprised, and I was taken off, I was caught off-guard because, as I explained earlier, my expectation was that the Board would get to meet at least maybe the last three to five. And I requested, I had a conversation with the Administrator, and he was very accommodating. I requested a review of not just the top three or four resumes, but he was kind enough to go through the resumes with me, and we spent, the county attorney and the county administrator spent, I don't know, near enough an hour with me, and I was afforded the courtesy of reviewing the applications, and I went over those, and I looked at them, and I would encourage my colleagues to do the same thing. As I said, my disappointment is not with Shannon Ogletree. He's a fine young man. I'm impressed with his performance. I just, I don't like surprises, and this was a surprise to me.
Commissioner Williamson.
Just from my information, the way the county ordinance is set up now, they're actually the only people that the Commission hires is the county administrator and the county attorney. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. And you confirm department heads through their employment contract typically?
We confirm, but we don't do the hiring and firing of anybody but those two folks.
That's correct.
And I guess maybe, and shame on me, because I guess I assumed that this position would be more along those lines, and I just want to make sure that, and this is no reflection on Mr. Walker and the other two that were on this recruitment committee, but I just want to make sure, too, that the wages, you know, that were asked from different folks that had applied for this job, that that was not part of the reason that we hired who we hired. If you understand what I'm saying, do we look at the wages requested from the other applicants? Did that have any bearing on our decision?
I think out of the, and again, I don't want to, having done these, certainly I needed to know what their expectations were on salaries. Some were, I thought, excessive. We had some in excess of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but that, out of the, probably there would be, there would be some number that would be within our advertised range, which was a hundred.
Okay, well, and like I say, I just wanted to know that to make sure that that was not part of the decision-making, to make sure that we got the best candidate, and I think that's a fair question.
I understand. Again, the, this has been the most, this has been, you know, we're talking about transparency. This has been the most transparent hiring process that we've gone about. I've either promoted or hired every other Director in this room with the exception of the county engineer that was here when I got here. So, and sometimes I'm, in some places, I'm on my second, third one, so all I'm just saying is, it was never my understanding that we would be anything outside of the...
And like I say, and I understand what you're saying, it's just, I guess I was in the wrong for thinking that since the Commission was creating this position, that we would have more input on the hiring, and that's my bad.
Okay, anything else? This time, I would recommend to move this to Thursday's agenda without objection. Hearing none, Mr. Chairman, it passes?
I agree.
I'm sorry, I'm still on the, I'm still on the cowl on there right now. Okay. Number two, discussion of purchasing GIS application for Economic Development in the amount of $15,000 in partnership with Florida Power and Light statewide discount program. There's documentation in the back of your book. It talks about almost half price, I believe it is, that Florida Power and Light will pick it up. Come up, Shannon, and explain this.
Yeah, and our computer department has looked at the proposal. Mr. Ogletree's worked with Ms. Floyd and her staff in this, you know, verifying this works with us, and I suspect if it's like most of the other applications that we do, we will be able to take this and to enhance it and make it do considerably more than...
Correct. This is a building and sites database. We will input the buildings and sites that are located within Santa Rosa County. Then as a user, anybody can go to our website and pinpoint this building, and then generate a report five miles out, one mile out, out to 60 miles out, in terms of labor force, demographic spending, demographics, labor force, those sort of reports. In addition, this software provides a comparison report. So if a company is looking here at Santa Rosa County versus, say, Beaver County up in the Pittsburgh area, they will be able to compare the two areas. So it's a comparison report also. This tool will also allow us to integrate a lot of the GIS layers that Alita and her department has, so we can put in schools, we can put in parks. This will be a very large database that GIS planning will house for us. And also for mobile applications, we can generate reports on the fly through our iPhones, Android phones, and iPads.
Mr. Chairman. Okay, and I misspoke earlier, it'd be a $5,000 discount by working through Florida Power and Light.
Correct. The original price is close to $20,000.
Mr. Collier.
Yeah, Shannon, under this, we're the new proposal generator. I know a lot of times now, there's software out there where you can actually put a building on the ground. We have that ability, if we have somebody that comes into the county and says, you know, "We got this idea of a two-story building with warehouse facilities, could we plug that into a particular piece of property, turn it around, do all the fancy things they can with a computer now?" Will this allow us that ability to give that new client an idea of what, you know, in his mind, his piece, or his building would look like on that?
No, sir. This is just a straight demographic profile reported would provide. It does not do the, what you're looking at is 3D modeling for a building.
All right. Is there, can you ask them about the ability to do that? I mean, I don't...
I can ask, but through my...
And if not, there's other programs out there that we can certainly enhance this with, but...
Through my research with this company, I can tell you this company does not offer that. I think some of the software you are kind of referring to is what Roger probably deals with on a more of a daily basis, so...
Might be something we want to, if we're going to go this far into software and the ability to provide all this, it may be an additional tool in your sales box if we can...
I can look at, because Georgia Power, with friends in Economic Development in Georgia, Georgia Power does have a software program that you're familiar with, that you're describing.
All right. Be interesting. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Melvin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to add that I've met with Mr. Ogletree this morning in my office, and he reviewed the program with me, and as my wife calls me, as a recovering CPA, the numbers that that generator, they're very valuable, that those are precisely the numbers that people bring to their CPAs and financial advisors to assist in building decision models for, you know, to look at profit overhead, you know, just the overall decision to locate a large, a very large dollar asset. This is exactly the data that those folks need to have to make those decisions. So I think it's a great investment. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Chairman, I would move this to Thursday's agenda without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
One last item, discussion of amendment to economic development-related expense policy to include military and industry appreciation events. There's documentation in your book. If you have any questions, Mr. Walker will be happy to answer them at this time.
I was curious when Mr. Isaacson had mentioned the fact of giving me some guidelines on running the effort. This is the most guidelines I've ever been given in the world. I appreciate, you know, it's been a different function. I've appreciated the current clerk and the previous clerk working with us on how we document our policies on expenses, how do we deal with how we spend the money. And Spencer and his group have been very helpful. As we've evolved, we had not thought about the piece that the previous effort had gone specifically with the industry appreciation events and some of the military appreciation events that we fund. And they just want to make sure that we're covered as far as those expenditures.
Okay, and here again, as we go about rebuilding the organization, there are going to be these kind of issues that come up from time to time that we'll have to go back and refix. So any questions? Hearing none, I would move this to Thursday's agenda without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner. Under Administrative Committee, item number one is discussion of authorization for sheriff to submit an application to the U.S. Department of Justice for COPS Hiring Program Grant. And we have some folks from the sheriff's office today to work us through this. I think we looked at this in the past and have had some concerns with the length of the grant, what happens when the grant expires. I think those questions will probably surface again today, so if you will, name an address for the record and...
Lieutenant Liam Butcher with the Santa Rosa Sheriff's Office.
And Major Mark Hayes, Santa Rosa Sheriff's Office.
Thank you. Again, I think our question's going to be, when the grant runs out, we certainly, you know, don't mind spending federal dollars to put these fellows in uniform, put them on the road wherever the sheriff happens to need them, but, you know, you're looking at nine full-time sworn officers. The length of the grant, again, is going to run out at some period of time. What do we do then? That's going to be, that was a big question.
We're responsible for them, for the cost of them.
I understand.
For 12 months.
And, you know, again, you already have the local match. You taking it out of current budget, or you going to ask for additional dollars from the board to match this?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. You have it, or yes, or you're going to ask?
The sheriff's going to ask for additional money.
Okay.
He is in discussion with the school district about possible help funding that.
Okay. All right. Other board members, Commissioner?
The biggest problem I have is, once this grant runs out, and of course, we have a local match, it's pretty hefty here, $331,271. It has to do with resource officers in the school, and we've had to do away with those, and I think the school board sort of stepped up the plate on any place that they may want to pay for one. I think you're going to end up having the same problem, you're going to give somebody something, and then you're going to end up having to take it away because you don't have funding for it again. I really, myself personally, don't want to get into doing that. And that's, like I say, it's just my opinion. I understand the need, but I think that if the school board feels like that there's that great a need, that they should be willing to fund part of that. The county has not gone up on Avroam tax for years and years and years, and the school board hasn't been able to go up on theirs over the years, and they have a half-cent or one-cent sales tax, half-cent, I think it is, sales tax that they're able to collect money for, too, that helps the school board. We don't have that. We have less revenue now than we've had in the past, and I don't see that changing any time soon. And I understand the need, but it just, it doesn't make sense from a business standpoint, why would we do this and then have to get rid of them later? And then also, my question, too, is where are we going to come up with a local match? You all don't have it in your budget, and we certainly don't have it in ours.
Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lynchardt.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to support this. I did in the last time that the COPS program came up because of the same concerns that have been voiced today. But at this point, you know, we've seen a steady reduction in county personnel. Hopefully, we're nearing the end of the economic downturn. I think all signs point to brighter days ahead. Through this COPS program, we can have five, or I'm sorry, nine full-time law enforcement officers in Santa Rosa County for the next four years, and we will pay 25 cents on the dollar for those officers. We authorized three, I believe, additional positions for the sheriff's department within the last six months, because we recognized that we were, that we needed more officers on the street. I think we're still in that position. I'd like to see more officers on the street. I think once the genie's out of the bottle, so to speak, when it comes to crime in your area, it's that much harder, if not impossible, to turn back that wave. So I'm going to support this. In terms of funding, the local match is $331,000 that would be due in year four. So is that correct?
No, each year. Or for a total of three years of the grant, it was $331,271. It's about $110,500 a year.
Okay. It's 25 cents on the dollar, though?
Correct.
That's correct. Okay, so we'd be paying $331,000, and the COPS program, the grant, would provide approximately $800,000 or so. Is that right?
$993,000.
$993,000, so a million dollars would be coming into our economy in form of salary, fringe benefits, things of that nature. So I would support that at this time.
Mr. Chairman.
Have a mic, Commissioner, just a moment. Mr. Chairman, you got me totally confused at this time, so I appreciate that. All right. The $331,271 would be per year from Santa Rosa County?
No, that's over the three-year period of the grant.
Over the three-year period, okay. Well, I'm trying to get some of this straightened out, so $121,000 per officer over the three-year period of time?
I'm sorry, say that again.
You have here $125,000 per officer.
No, that's the maximum they will pay per officer over the three-year period.
Okay, so, and it is three years, not four years?
Right, but we have to maintain those positions 12 months after the period of the grant.
And then the other question I have, Commissioner Williamson said something about resource officers and getting the school board involved. Commissioner Lynchardt alluded to, these would be on-the-road type deputies, so which are we going after here?
Their school resource officer positions.
Of course, I mean, they're still going to betterment our community and stuff, but I just want to make sure I'm on the same page with you, so... Okay, all right, that answered my question. Thank you. Commissioner Melvin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, too, have a couple of questions. A school resource officer is a fully certified deputy sheriff and capable of doing most general jobs.
Sure, I understand.
Is that not correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do you have any idea what the school board's position is on this? Have you been to those? Have you been to that board?
None of those times. Sheriff's been talking with Mr. Rozdick, but they have not come back to us yet.
Okay. Do you have total dollar value for the four years, the fifth year, I'm sorry, I misspoke? So the program has to go for three years with federal funding and a small match from Santa Rosa County. And you're looking to the Board of County Commissioners, this budget, to provide that match. So I'm asking, has the school board been asked to participate in this match? Second part of that same question is, when we get to the end of the road, at the end of the third year, this board picks up the entire tab for this program. We could sit down and do the math, but I would have hoped that you would have had that for us in this meeting, that we had the total dollar and any money that the school board may have agreed to.
I want to do a total.
So, I mean, we need to know, we could ask staff to sit down and compute that number for us, but I would have hoped that perhaps you would have offered that to us in the presentation. No, so I think you're going to need to talk to the, I need to get with the sheriff. I mean, I think instead of us kind of flying on the fly with this, you know, this is just, I think we need to get with the sheriff and kind of be sure that we understand the program. I think your concerns are absolutely right, because if he's been talking to the school board, I mean, we need to know those type things. I think the sheriff needs to...
Okay. I think what you're looking for is the first three years, the first three years, it would cost...
Major, just let me get control of this thing again here. All right. And I hear what county administrator is saying, and I agree with Commissioner Melvin. I'd like to see what, basically, you know, we're scrambling numbers here, and it's not helping us, and as Commissioner Melvin said, we could all sit up here trying to scribble math while we're not listening to conversation, and that's not helping anybody. So I just wanted, I would feel better if I knew what our cost was per year on our share, and then the cost of fourth year, and you can give that to us per man?
Totally.
Man or woman, and a total. I think that would help me a lot. I'm not saying I won't support this, but I'm looking at too many numbers here and crunching those numbers, and I agree, it'd been easier if you guys had brought that to us.
I can give it to you.
And if you could do it now, that's great.
Yes. The first three years for the nine officers, our share would be approximately $110,500.
Per year?
Per year.
One, one again?
$110,500.
Okay.
Would be our share for the first three years.
Okay, that's all.
After that, the nine officers would be approximately $423,000 at the current rate.
At the current rate, okay.
It's roughly $47,000 per officer, so that comes out to $423,000. And that would be the full amount in the fourth year.
Okay, and consecutive years after that?
Correct, and the years to follow.
Commissioner Williamson?
Well, I support law enforcement. I mean, I wouldn't make any mistake, I do support law enforcement. But I think Commissioner Lynchardt commented that we allowed the sheriff to hire more deputies. If I'm not mistaken, that was out of monies he already had instead of returning to us. It's not that we had to ante up any more money. And in this case, when this is over, we're not only going to have to do it during the term of this hiring process, we're going to have to do, we'll take full responsibility once it goes away. And I think all the counties have been doing more with less, and, you know, it's just like all counties, all county employees need a raise, but until things do turn around, we're not able to do it because we don't have the revenue, we're just trying to stay afloat. And I just want you to understand, I do support the law enforcement, but I just don't think this, business-wise, is the proper way to do this.
Mr. Chairman, I have a follow-up. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One last question. When you gave us the full tab, that this board, assuming that we agreed to the program, this board's going to be responsible for 423?
$23,000, yes, sir.
423. Now, does that number include equipment and other support? I understand that's the officer and the salary for that lady or that gentleman, but the support, the, we need the total price. If it involves a squad car, then we need to know that.
Correct. Initially, in the first year, we would have to purchase patrol vehicles, things like that for them.
So those dollars are not in this discussion?
No, sir.
So we would need, how many more automobiles?
In the first year, that would be roughly nine vehicles at about $25,000.
Those are the sorts of numbers we need to deal with. It's not that we don't support this. This particular grandfather of 15 and two greats of those children, I still have, 12 of them are still in public schools. So this is a matter very near and dear to my heart. However, we're dealing with tax dollars, and we don't make, you know, snap decisions, so we need to see all the numbers. We need to see the personnel costs, the equipment cost, et cetera, so that we can then come to a business-like decision for you, okay? And quite frankly, how the sheriff has handled these in the past, and I think that we need to be sure and sit down with a plan, because, you know, Commissioner Melvin is absolutely right, is, he came to us with a plan before it had this kind of worked out, and I...
we need to be sure and sit down with a plan because, you know, Commissioner Melvin is absolutely right, is, he came to us with a plan before it had this kind of worked out, and I expected him to be here. I mean, you obviously need some more information. I think that we need to get with the sheriff and sit down and work out what all those, the full, the full impact's going to be. I mean, typically, he's tried to work that out within what he's got.
And if you will, correct me if I'm wrong, this grant does not allow anything but salary. You don't, you can't use part of this grant for funding of equipment or vehicles.
Correct.
And typically, what they've done is, of course, they pick up the uniforms and the other equipment, and then they work with the vehicles through some kind of process. But we need to, we need to get you that information to, for sure, because you need the full picture.
And Lieutenant Butcher, you're kind of new at this and getting, getting kind of the crash course on it, so I appreciate you being here. But I think another thing, if you'll work diligently with Supervisor of Schools, Mr. Rosdick, and get some answers on his behalf, it'll help us a lot, too. And I guess what we're saying is, this isn't a showstopper today, but you got some homework cut out for you.
And also, just to clarify, we're just asking for permission to apply for the grant. We're not, you know, until you get the grant and you expend funds, that's when you're We have to apply by May 22nd, just to let you know that.
And I think we've been here before. Correct me if I'm wrong, Major, I think we've applied for the grant and either not got it, so it stopped there, and we've also applied for the grant, and then the board said, hey, we can't fund it, and had to turn the grant down. So, we've...
There is still an acceptance level to this. If they were to grant us the fund, we would still have to go through an acceptance process from there.
Not our first rodeo with this one.
This is just asking to be able to apply for the grant.
And I'd get a gut feel Thursday that possibly we'd move that direction, but I'd feel a lot better having some more statistics. So, you know, a lot of these questions I've asked you today, I know, but, you know, we're airing this, we're responsible to the public, and that's a lot of times why I asked, so...
We can get all those numbers to you by this afternoon.
All right, thank you.
So, y'all can review them.
All right. Any other conversation, questions? If not, I'll move this to Thursday's agenda without objection. Hearing none, it passes. Thank you. All right. Let me get back here. Okay, we're moving at lightning speed. Now, we're on item two. Discussion of scheduling meeting to interview five firms or individuals submitting proposals for management of Navarre Pier. Mr. Walker.
Chairman, we had recently opened the proposals for Pier Management Services, maybe about a month ago, and you see the five firms or individuals that have applied. It seems to me the next step would be to schedule a meeting to interview the five firms or individuals and start working through the proposal review process.
All right. Comments, questions, members of the board? Commissioner.
The existing contract with Pier Incorporated goes to the end of the year. Is that not correct? Okay, I don't see the essence of speeding this up. I mean, I know we need to go through the process, but I think the process probably needs to start more like the end of summer, or the first of September would be more in line with the way we need to proceed. I don't think it's something that's that urgent at this moment.
Okay, other comments?
Mr. Chairman, I agree with Commissioner Williamson. I think we've got adequate time and no sense of creating a hornet's nest until it's time.
Just letting the hornet's nest get bigger, maybe. All right. Any other comments from members of the board? Commissioner Melvin?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a comment. We've asked for and received five individuals' proposals, and those proposals are set in concrete. They can't change them. That's what they said they wanted, and that's what they ask us to consider. I think, as a matter of courtesy, for the five that have submitted it, they need to know if they need to proceed with their business plan one way or the other, or consider investing their resources in other areas. We have businessmen and women that, you know, have made a proposal to us, and my two cents worth, I think they need certainly not a snap answer, but an answer in a reasonable amount of time. If not this set of meetings, then certainly perhaps in the next set of meetings, because, as I said, we have the proposals before us at this point in time. The proposals are set. The deadline has passed. So, we have what we have. As a matter of courtesy to those that took their time and effort to reply, I think that this board owes them an answer, probably, I don't know what's reasonable, 30 days from the time that we've told the world that we're going to be considering them. I think that's just a courtesy we owe to these businessmen and women.
All right. Commissioner, do you have a comment?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't see the harm in waiting a couple of months. I think pushing it again towards the end of summer is potentially going to be a better course of action for us. The pier operator, I know, is going to be busy for the next few months out there. Hopefully, we have a great tourist season out there, and I just think it would make more sense to hold off, wait till the end of summer, and then interview. Otherwise, we're going to have, you know, if the current operator were not the candidate that was selected, then they would be operating for six months under sort of a lame duck kind of situation. And I don't think that would be potentially beneficial for everybody involved. I'd rather, let's wait till, you know, August, September, interview the firms, then we still have four months if we do it in September. There's still four months before the changeover. And it would be done when there's not a lot of activity going on out there, because it would be in the shoulder months.
And I agree with Commissioner Lynch. I think the reason we extended the contract is where we wouldn't be in limbo during the tourist season, in all fairness to the operator. So, I agree completely.
Well, I'm, okay, I'll chime in now, and certainly, a former accountant and myself have learned to count to three. But I disagree with the majority at this point. We've, basically, we've hung the chum out there, and now we're snatching away from them. And that's, I guess, being it's a pier and talking about fishing, that's the best way I know how to put it. It's not fair, I don't think it's fair. I think if, you know, Pier Inc. retains the contract, that gives them the ability to move forward without waiting till the end, you know, another two or three months. If another contract is let, it's certainly going to take four or five months to stand up a good business plan and get, you know, start getting things into motion, getting things organized. I just don't feel, if this was the intent of the board, we should have waited till then to put out the RFP. I think, you know, we kind of made that mistake up here. I think it's time, you know, maybe we live with that mistake and go ahead and announce this, get these done, schedule them for 30 days from now, because if we schedule them in June, that's a six-month timeframe in order to stand up a business plan and get things ready to go. So, I would hope that we could get some consideration of that. Again, if that was our intent, we should not have executed it this time. I don't, I just don't see the fairness of dangling this thing out there. Let's get it moving, know where we're at. Commissioner?
Well, the way I understand it, nothing says that we have to take any of these submissions. I mean, there's other options. There's even the option of the county taking it over and running the pier part and leasing out the other facilities to folks to have income to offset what it would cost us to have employees to run it, and then we would have more control. So, I think there's other options, and I don't think that, I say at this time, we need to speed that up. I think three months is a long enough time for anybody to set their business plan in place.
All right. Any other comments, questions? I'll open it now to the floor.
Dorothy Sly, 8579 Gulf Boulevard. As the current operator of the pier, there are a lot of things that we need to do, and if we retain the contract, we need to go ahead and spend some money. And if we, we're going to go through the busiest part of our season, not being able to buy more chairs, or buy a freezer, or buy the things that you need to operate on. And if it goes to another company, there are a lot of things that they need to know are not going to go with the contract, so that they can go and purchase the things that they need to get it up and running in January. Because by February, we start watching for Kobia, and March, the Kobia are here. And there's just a number of things from the position of sitting at the building. We had some benches thrown over the pier a few weeks ago, and those things cost us $400 apiece. I'm not going to go out and purchase a bunch more benches to put on the pier if we don't retain the contract. So, there's, it's better, I think, for all concerned, if y'all could just get this over with, decide who you want to manage it, whether it's us or somebody else, and then they'll have the whole summer to plan for when they take over, or we'll have the summer to plan for the things that need to happen there to protect our pier, to protect it from vandalism at night, and some different things that, you know, I want to talk with y'all about.
Wallace Mahoot, 5500 Cox Road, Milton, Florida. I would have to say that I agree with moving forward on making a decision about the pier. Dorothy's done a great job with that pier. We moved here in 1999. It's the best I've ever seen it. It's clean. There's, seems to be not a lot of nonsense. I know she's made some mistakes, but everybody makes mistakes, and they can be corrected. And also, I'd like to get it straight, will the commissioners be involved in that process of selecting?
Wallace, this is a contract, and we will visit this. This is not a county employee. This is a contract.
Dorothy's not one of my employees.
Yeah.
Okay, but I would like to say that it doesn't make sense to me that you will be involved in picking the person to manage just the pier, and not be involved in picking the Director of Economic Development, who will be responsible for the economy of this county for a long time, and have that great responsibility.
Okay, well, we've already had that discussion this morning.
I know that, but do you see what I'm getting at?
No, I don't, so...
I'm sorry you don't. I really am.
Okay. Well, it's in the ordinance, so we'll go from there. We're not going to revisit that. Have you got anything else to say about the...
I'm making the comparison, if you don't mind.
Well, all right.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else? All right. Again, I still feel...
Sorry, gentlemen. Joey Bryant, 199 Chamillion, Gulf Breeze, Florida. And I also would like just to express my preference that we could go in and move forward with this. I'm one of the owners of Coastal Concessions. And just to give a personal note, we did experience something like this in Fort Pickens. We just won the contract to handle all the concessions on Fort Pickens for five years. We thought we were going to have a lot more time than we did, and it turns around, we had about a little under a month to flip the place, a little under a week to actually get the keys and get the place open. And I realize if, you know, if we extend it out 90 days, it still gives us a lot of time, but pier management would be a very big undertaking, and I think for all five parties involved, you know, the sooner we would know how we can allocate our resources and move forward, it definitely would be better. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. I do have one concern, too, that I would like to clarify. One of the applicants, and these folks are great, Pasco Gibson, Clifton Wells, and Yolanda Wells. Clifton's an outstanding county employee, Pasco's a good friend, operator of a local restaurant, I've known Yolanda for a while. My concern would be, and I'd like the county attorney to clarify it, is the, so everybody knows, it's on record, that if a county employee bid on this contract, and that's going to be a concern, I think we ought to get it on table.
The county employee has withdrawn, so he is no longer a part of that proposal. Certainly, a county employee could bid, he just couldn't retain his job if he won the opportunity.
Okay, now, I'm writing it right here on today's docket, Clifton Wells, and I don't know...
Yes, sir, that document was generated on April the 9th, when the bids were open, so it's just the result of what that package said. Mr. Wells has withdrawn.
Okay, after the fact, can you change a contract bid or an offer after the fact?
Absolutely.
Nothing about the substance change, you know, that kind of thing, the proposal, the services that that collection of folks is going to offer, but yes, sir, he may withdraw.
Because I, okay, I just wanted that out there, because eventually, it's going to hit the fan, and might as well start right here, so... All right. Okay. Wishes of the board. I support Commissioner Melvin on this. I think we ought to move forward. It keeps all these five offers in limbo, and I, unless there's an intention or a motion from the board to just throw it out and start again, or come up with an entirely different idea, I don't see what will be achieved by waiting 30 days or 90 days or whatever. So, I...
We could do the same thing that you did on the horse arena, you know, you said, are you going to continue your bid, and for how many days do you have a problem with doing, or are they going to withdraw? So, I don't have a problem extending it. I mean, it can be extended with the option, if anybody wants to pull out, they can.
Okay. Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman, I'm thinking back, when we first talked about extending the contract, and I agree with what Commissioner Lynch said, that the reason that we extended our contract was to get the new contract away from the middle of tourism season. So, thinking back, if we move forward now and start doing interviews in 30 days, we're going to defeat the very purpose of extending that contract.
Okay. All right. Then, I guess, we'll take no action on Thursday. County administrator, what would be our, where we go from here?
We could go, Mr. Chairman, we could go ahead and set a date, just set a date on over towards, more towards the end of summer.
For interviews?
For interviews, yes.
Okay, all right.
So, I would move that to Thursday's agenda.
All right, then I'll...
To set a date in August or September.
All right, and do so without objection?
Without objection.
Hearing none, it passes. Man, did you, you got that? Okay. All right, so just so it's straight to the general public and everybody listening, on Thursday, we will set the date for the interviews. All right?
And as always, we got you within three months. You've only given us a three-month window to come up with that time, so I appreciate the clarity, so we'll get you something on that.
All right. We appreciate that. Okay, and hearing no objections, it passes. Thank you. All right. All right, item number three is discussion of a bid from AE New Incorporated in the amount of $789, $789,500, $789,500, excuse me, for construction of Baghdad Volunteer Fire Department Building, including base bid and alternatives one, two, and four as low bidder meeting specification. Comments, questions from members of the board? If not, I move this to Thursday without objection. Hearing none, it passes.
We'll probably move that, go ahead and move that on Thursday to the Financial Management Bid Committee, where we normally would put that. I just wanted to get that here. I had Grunhofer was here, and just wanted to, if there were any questions.
All right, great. I know they'll look forward to that new firehouse, like, you know, all the other ones we've been able to build here lately. Okay, hearing no objection, it passes till Thursday. Item four is discussion of construction of the proposed judicial facility. We, I had this put on the agenda a few weeks ago. Commissioner Williamson was not here at that time, so we wanted to rediscuss this. At that time, I had a suggestion on a certain location, and pretty much several other planning ideas. The board felt necessary to re-review several facilities, proposed pieces of property and sites that were available back in early 2008. They're listed for you on your agenda, and at this time, I will open it, the floor, to comments from other board members. Commissioner Lynch?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would propose that we set aside time in the near future to have a workshop of the board to discuss the proposed judicial facility. I think it's too big of an item to tackle on a regular agenda. I think there are lots of issues.
I think there are lots of issues surrounding the construction of the new judicial facility that we need to hash out, and I don't think it would be practical to do it in a committee meeting or a regular meeting. So, I would propose that we hold a workshop of the Board of Commissioners to discuss area where we want the court, preliminary discussions of area rather than site selection. I think that's the first thing we need to do. What area of the county do we want it in? Then we can hone in on particular sites. Also, financing arrangements, you know, all we have talked about in earnest up here is a potential sales tax to fund the acquisition and construction of a new facility, but I think there are other options out there that have been pitched in the past to the board, lease backs and things of that nature. But I think we need to discuss that as well, rather than jumping right into a site selection or something of that nature. And then, the approach to building the facility, you know, do we, if we're going from 36,000 square feet or 38,000 square feet now, do we really need to go right to 100,000 square foot facility or 120,000 square foot facility? Or is it something that we can do in phases? Because we do have a significant amount of reserves that would make a huge dent in a facility if we were to phase it in and take the necessary functions that we need, you know, that we earnestly need a new facility for, particularly speaking about the courtrooms, you know, protection of our judiciary, move those to a new facility, and then phase in the state attorney's office, public defender's office, clerk of courts, whatever else that we eventually want to have in a true judicial facility. In other words, build the courthouse first and let the ancillary support services come over time. You know, that's an option that I think we need to consider. But again, I think that's too much to chew on during a regular meeting, so I would like to see us have a workshop within the next, you know, 45 days, 60 days, and start talking about this.
Commissioner Melvin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Lynch had hit my point with his last sentence. We need to give careful consideration to the needs of the courthouse, and bear in mind, the old courthouse is very adequate for the ancillary functions, so if we plan with that in mind, that we can free up a lot of office space for the court's support functions and build, you know, the core of what we need, I think we'll be better, sir.
I would agree, through the public, you know, meeting, let's get this all on the table. I thank everybody for letting this thing moving forward, because it's certainly something we need to do. However, I do disagree, and perhaps clarify me on this, the comment that the current courthouse will serve ancillary functions, because, one, even if it was able to facilitate that, now we're doubling the security cost and stuff like that, so I, I'm a little concerned with that. And the fact that if you're saying that what we have with the additions of the portables would serve for those functions, or the module, modules, whatever, trailer park...
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I'm saying that those are all discussions that we need to have at the workshop. We don't need to get lost in the weeds here today, because we don't have enough time, there aren't enough hours in the day to hash it out in a regular meeting. I think there are several big issues that we need to tackle before we embark on this decision.
Alright, well, I just, you guys all know how important this is, and we've got to keep moving forward. The only thing I would suggest that we schedule two hearings, one on the south end. If we can get a facility down there, let's have one up here, and let's have the exact same meeting on the south end, so we can get everybody involved. And, of course, that's up to the rest of the board, but I, you know, we hear a lot from the south end folks not feeling included, so...
We actually won't have the Tiger Point Facility, I don't think, as Commissioner Lynch reminded me this morning, I think becomes available maybe in the September timeframe, really before we'll have the capability of... Doing that effectively, I mean, I'm...
I think those are, the primary decision there, I think where we need to cast a really wide net is going to be area selection, and I think that's something that we meet about, we talk about, and then we each go out to our respective districts, talk to your constituents, talk to the chambers of commerce, the Rotary Clubs, the business groups, and take the pulse of everyone on site selection, East Milton, Downtown Milton, Avalon, Jay, you know, where do we want the new judicial facility to be? And then, come back to the board. It's not going to, we're not going to meet in 60 days and then build a new courthouse. You know, we're going to meet and embark on that process, because it will take a long time, and we're planning for the next 75 years, potentially. So, it's something that's going to take some time to come to fruition.
Okay, then, let's just try to have staff by Thursday have some allotted times selected for us, and we'll do so without objection. Yes, sir. Alright, do so without objection. Hearing none, it passes. Alright, let me get back here. Alright, item number five is discussion of amendment number one to the Florida Department of Environmental Protection Coastal Management Program grant for the Baghdad Mill Site. Backups in your books? Are there any comments, questions from...
The action is just to extend it from, I believe, the timeframe from September 15th to December 31st.
Okay. Now, the comments, questions, I'll move that without objection. Hearing none, it passes. Item six is the discussion of Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, HMPG, allocation for Hurricane Isaac. Mr. Walker?
In your packet is a memo from Ms. Harris to me regarding the allocation that we received, at least a preliminary allocation of $183,000. If you remember, this is 75% funds, and it would require a local match. The total application would be, total project would be $244,000. So, you see the numbers. One of the, the key thing to me is that projects already in progress, which she means that we've applied for or embarked on, can't be included. In other words, we couldn't take the amount that we've already received for the Settlers' Colony HMGP process or project and allocate this extra $244,000, which would, to me, would be a more prudent way to do it, given the shortfall. So, we really don't have another drainage project that fits the, it's a relatively modest amount of money, as you know from how drainage projects go, so you see the couple of, the couple of alternatives that we've come up with with, at least preliminarily, and that's City of Milton with a lift station elevation, and then also in the backup would be to allow Rebuild Northwest Florida to, you know, apply for these funds for their effort in Santa Rosa County. It's my understanding that they, they're, the funds allocated that we've gone through in the past with Rebuild, and they've generated on their own, at least those allocated to Santa Rosa County have been committed, so there's a waiting list, and then we just need to, you know, that would be an option.
Okay. And as it says here in our backup, so far, over 1,000, almost 1,100 residents have benefited from the rebuild program. There's 83 pending completion, and still almost 1,000 on a waiting list, so... See, it's a good program to help our citizens out. Any other comments, questions?
We'll just need some kind of guidance on that. I mean, we'll have to take, I think, specific action, but I'll get with Ms. Harris and be sure that we understand.
Okay, and can do that by Thursday? Alright, then we'll move this to Thursday for a final vote, and I do so without objection. Hearing none, it passes. Item number seven is discussion of members of the 2013 Value Adjustment Board. Alright? Who all are I a volunteer? We need two commissioners for the Value Adjustment Board, if I'm correct.
And one...
Don't everybody hit their mic button at one time now?
I'll do it again, Mr. Chairman.
Alright, we got Commissioner Salder, and...
I'll hit Mr. Salder out.
Alright, there we go. Move without objection. Hearing none, it passes.
Also, Mr. Chairman, if you recall, there's also the requirement for one citizen member appointed by the board who owns homestead property in Santa Rosa County.
Okay, and look for volunteers?
Mr. Chairman, I see Mr. Young in the audience. He has served on this board in the past. I don't know, would you be interested in serving again?
Alright.
I would nominate Mr. Jim Young.
Hearing no, hearing no objections, we thank you, Mr. Young, for your service to the county. And if you didn't see that train, we'll get you some new glasses. Alright, so we'll take care of that and move that to Thursday. Item number eight is discussion of policy regarding oral presentations and vendor negotiations before board pursuant to applicable Florida statutes. Mr. Walker? Okay, Ms. Jones?
As you know, the Florida Open Meetings Law has always contained some very few exceptions. Sometime in 2012, and I don't recall the exact date, an additional exemption from the Open Meetings Law was enacted to allow you all to interview bidders in closed meetings without broadcasting those meetings, where you can interview and ask questions without later interviews, being able to sit in our lobby and perhaps watch a meeting on their iPad, or someone back at their office watch the meeting and alert the later responders about the types of questions you might ask or what material might be presented. I think all of us have always kind of thought that if you presented later in the afternoon, you might have an advantage, potentially, to someone who presented early in the morning or was interviewed early in the morning. And the exemption added to the Open Meetings Law kind of took that into account in this technological age. So, because it would be a departure from our policy that we've established of broadcasting meetings and holding these kind of things open to the public, I suggested that, or it's my suggestion, that you review the exemption and affirm via a policy that you would like to take advantage of it.
Mr. Chairman? Ms. Jones, it's my understanding from reading the material provided in the backup that the same transparency is provided to the public. Would you please explain to us for the record how that would work, how private meeting would still protect that transparency?
It absolutely would have to be recorded, videotaped, and made available at a later date to be watched in its entirety. That later date being when you had made a decision, generally speaking.
So, conceivably, it could be that we conducted interviews for the firms in the morning and reached some decision and released the tape that afternoon.
Absolutely.
So, the only thing we have done is prevent feedback from the meeting to others who may have been more fortunate and not be the first one to have to present.
Absolutely, and I think as a matter of practice, we would make it available as quickly as possible, as you say, perhaps that afternoon. I don't know that we'd necessarily commit to anything like that based on when our decisions were made, but absolutely, I think we could commit to make it available as quickly as possible.
Yes, sir. Okay, any other questions from members of the board? Wishes of the board? Move this to Thursday for final vote? Okay, and we'll move it without objection. Hearing none, it passes. Next item now is discussion of scheduling the TDC-sponsored Navarbeach Sand Sculpturing Event, September 27th through 29th, 2013, including the week of September 23rd to 30th, 2013, for dismantling. Do so without objection. That's always an exciting event in our community and brings a lot of folks, so do so without objection. Hearing none, it passes. Item 10 is discussion of David Sweeney's property concerns. Mr. Sweeney?
While Mr. Sweeney comes to the microphone, I will maybe make some preliminary remarks. You have a memo along with photographs in your book regarding Mr. Sweeney's concerns. Mr. Sweeney, let me back up. Our Land Development Code provides that a person may appeal staff decisions to the zoning board within 15 days of a staff decision if he is dissatisfied with them. Mr. Sweeney's concerns began back in 2005, as best we can tell, regarding adjacent property, fencing issues, litter issues, other issues associated with the property. We've been working with him since about 2005, and he recently asked to come before the zoning board. Obviously, it was beyond 15 days from any decision that we had made, so I scheduled him to come before you all today, since you're the ultimate decision makers in these kinds of situations. We, of course, Mr. Gomillion can speak to several of the land development issues, and I will try to do the same. There are photographs of the property. Of course, litter issues are not addressed by the Board of County Commissioners, but are instead handled by the Sheriff's Department, and we've made sure the Sheriff's Department is aware of these issues and has investigated them on a few occasions and kind of continues to monitor them. If you have questions about my memo or the photograph, the fencing, we'll be glad to try to address those.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Mr. Sweeney, you have a floor. If I may, please, your name, address for the record.
Yes, I'm David Sweeney. I reside at 4024 East Johnson Avenue in Pensacola. I am a property owner in Santa Rosa County and have been, and owned several pieces of property in Santa Rosa County in my lifetime. I've always paid my taxes, and I believe that people should obey the laws. And I would say that probably only 75% of the property owners in this county or any county even know what the comprehensive plan in the Land Development Code is. But what it is, it's the law of the land. And what's happening in Santa Rosa County is administrative officials, mainly in code enforcement and in planning and zoning, and now the county attorneys getting into the act, are not enforcing the laws of this county, the Land Development Code, and it's been going on for 10 years. And as far as the county attorney saying that the time has expired, I'd like to bring you up to speed on what the story is. I wrote a letter to Mr. Walker and told him that I was unhappy with the administrative people in code enforcement and whatever. I asked him if we could have a meeting, and in my letter, I listed sections of the Land Development Code that state what they state. And I asked him to have all the people in that meeting be familiar with this, so that we came in here, why we could come to a solution. I asked him, I said, "I don't think I should have to take this before the Board of Appeals. My God, it's just a matter of you people doing your job." So, we had the meeting, and within 15 days after the meeting, I filed in writing a appeal for the administrative decisions. When I went to that meeting, and I want to ask the county attorney or Mr. Walker, can either one of you tell me the difference between a permitted use and a conditional use in the Land Development Code?
In each of our zoning categories, there is a list of permitted uses. It's what this zoning category is designed for. Conditional uses are those things that are perhaps okay in this zoning district with special consideration.
Alright. Now, can you tell me, in the Land Development Code, is a fence a structure?
I know you're getting into the fact that near your property is a fenced vacant lot, and I know that you have researched considerably our Land Development Code, and that the term "structure" is defined, and I don't have it right in front of me, but it's defined generally as man-made things affixed to property.
The what?
As man-made objects affixed to property.
Let me stop you right there, and I want to read to you what the definition is.
Okay, but while you look at that, I will say that we have always permitted... Okay, but while you look at that, I will say that we have always permitted vacant residential lots to be fenced. That complies with the spirit of our Land Development Code, and I don't know that the Board wants to get into telling people they can't fix, fence their vacant land. And perhaps we need to look at that definition the next time we make a change to the Land Development Code.
I'd like to ask the permission of the Board to allow me to attend the meeting between, before the zoning board. I didn't ask to appear here. The county attorney refused me going before the zoning board, which the Land Development Code specifically states and gives instructions that appeals for administrative decisions will be addressed to, sent to the Director of Planning and Zoning, who would forward it to the, at that time, and the Land Development says, BOA, which has been replaced now by the zoning board, apparently.
Yes.
All right. The county attorney would not allow me to go before that board. I'm requesting that I can go before the board because the Land Development Code says this is what I'm supposed to do, and that's the law of the land.
All right, what subject are you taking to the zoning board? Are you taking the fact that this fence is up and being built on the structure?
What I'm, I have written my appeals in writing, sent it to the Director of Planning and Zoning, who is supposed to have forwarded it to, I guess, you people. Have you read it?
I have not.
Absolutely not.
Right.
So how can I brief or you make a decision? I shouldn't even be here. The decision should have been made in this meeting that was called, and here's who was in attendance in the meeting. Mr. Walker, the county attorney, Mr. Gomillion, I believe, who is in charge of planning and zoning and code enforcement, the way I understand.
All right, let's cut to the chase. What is your, what do you want to appeal? What, a road, a building? You want to put a building up?
I am appealing, for 10 years, I've complained to code enforcement that adjacent property owners are using their yard, their property, as a junkyard for disabled, unregistered automobiles, refrigerators, just everything. And they keep telling me, "Well, he's got it around, a fence around it, and that makes it legal." And this gets into all the details that you people aren't familiar with, but the Board of Zoning will be.
All right, Mr. Gomillion, have you addressed these items? Or has our department addressed these items as far as fencing?
Yes, we have, and the, Ms. Jones did respond in writing relative to those decisions that were made relative to the fencing and the items that Mr. Sweeney have talked to. Also, the Sheriff's Department has, I know they have had a case. I'm not sure if it's still active relative to some adjacent property as well.
Let me say this. I am here speaking not just for myself. I'm speaking here for over 200 other property owners in Santa Rosa County. Now, if you don't think that there's a problem here, how can you have 200 or more citizens with the same complaints I've got? And the reason I know there's 200, there's got to be more. I don't know how many complaints that code enforcement has here on violations of the Land Development Code. But I do know, after talking to the sheriff's deputy who handles all the litter control or junkyards and stuff like that, which used to be handled up till a year or two ago by the code enforcement people, and she said, I call her and I say, "Hey, what's the status on my complaints? I made them last year ago. Have you made any headway?" I drive out there, I'll see any headway. She says, "Mr. Sweeney, I've got over 200 complaints like this, and when I, when yours comes up in order, I'll let you know." Well, I talked to her just recently, and I said, "Well, when do you think you're going to get, when will I be able to see some results of this problem being cleaned up?" And she said, "I'm sorry, you probably will never hear results."
Well, I can't help them speaking out of turn. Ms. Jones, what were the findings and the results that we let Mr. Sweeney know about?
Again, as to the fence, it was decided that the fence was compliant. He had also made complaints about a structure on the property, which we determined was compliant. As to litter, again, that's handled by the Sheriff's Department. I know they have a file. I don't know the status at all of their investigation.
Here's what the Land Development Code says pertaining to a fence, and this is the results I get back when I say, "Hey, you can't build a fence on a vacant lot." Reference, and I'll read it to you.
I agree with, well, you don't have to read it to us. I can read myself, but I agree with the county attorney. I think we'd have, be hard-pressed in a county like Santa Rosa County, especially not, not cutting out any end of the county, but you get up around J or something, somebody's going to have vacant land and want to fence it in. So I, I've somewhat leaned towards what the county attorney has just said, that we need to readdress that fact in the Land Development Code the next time we review.
The Land Development Code is to be enforced. The county code enforcement officer, I said, "This is simple. They did it to me when I bought my property in 1999." He says, "What's that?" I said, "Well, when I bought my property, it had an old mobile home on it that had been damaged by the hurricanes, and there was all kinds of junk and automobile parts and refrigerators and old washing machines and everything on my property. And a person named Jerry Broxson had lived there. Well, the hurricane comes through and it damaged the mobile home, and I bought the property." So I got to hold the code enforcement, and I said, "Look, I'll clean up my property, but I want you to make my adjacent neighbor here clean up his, Mr. Broxson." I said, "I go up to Wisconsin every year for six months," and I said, "I'll have my property cleaned up if you'll do that." Well, I was up in Wisconsin after about three months, and I get a letter in the mail from the clerk of the court, and it says, "Hey, you have to be here on the, you know, within 15 days, whatever it was. You are in violation of the Land Development Code." I said, "Jeez, what's this all about?" So I write him a letter back and say, "Could you have this hearing after I get back?" And they said, "Sure." So I went to the hearing, and the code enforcement officer was there, and the judge says, "I see that you're in violation of the Land Development Code." And I said, "Well, yes, sir," but I said, "I hired somebody to clean up my property and everything, and told him, 'Just send me a bill, and I'll send you a check,'" and that happened to be an ex-county commissioner here, Mr. Gooden. And I said, "If it hasn't been cleaned up, I don't know why." So I called Mr. Gooden, and I said, "Hey, how come you didn't clean up that property? Here I am having to go to court on it." He said, "Well, Mr. Broxson told me if I put one piece of equipment on your property, he poured sugar in my gas tanks."
Well, we're getting into hearsay and controversy.
I know that, but I'm just.
You know, I respect you. I respect the fact you're a veteran and, you know, you got your, you know, your shirt and hat on and everything, and believe me, I have the utmost respect for your military career, but we don't need to get into, you know, he said, she said, you getting rubbed the wrong way.
That's exactly right. I am just asking permission to go before the zoning board, who understands these details.
All right. Ms. Jones, this is, do we have any ability to keep any citizen from appearing before a planning and zoning board? And if so, what?
Mr. Sweeney has styled his request as an appeal, and that comes with a 15-day provision. And I'm of the opinion that these issues are years old, not 15 days old.
This is not true.
Mr. Sweeney, please.
This is very atypical of what the zoning board currently hears, and I'm afraid that they will not exactly be accustomed to dealing with it. If any party doesn't like what the zoning board does, they can always appeal it back to you. Therefore... Right. Therefore, it was my belief that we could cut to the chase by bringing Mr. Sweeney directly to you all, since you're the ultimate arbiter of these things, so we could save him a step and our guys a step by bringing him directly here for this board to decide. If you want to send him back to the zoning board, I guess that remains your prerogative. I think we'll be here again.
You will not be here.
I don't see a benefit in that. Commissioner Williamson?
Okay, the way I understand it, staff has already made recommendations and gave us answers to this. We either go by what staff has told us, or we do something different. And I would recommend that we go by what staff has told us and move on.
Okay. All right, and you make an informed motion?
I so move, without objection.
Am I denied, then, that I cannot follow the Land Development Code and have a hearing before the zoning board?
County attorney deems it that we, Mr. Sweeney, the county attorney sees that the time has passed for your, for the appeal. I've got a motion on the floor that we go with staff recommendation as a Board of Commissioners, and I hear no objections to that.
You're not even going to investigate and let me present where the Land Development Code specifically says, I can give it to you here, you cannot store anything, any article on any zoned piece of property unless it is zoned M2 or above.
Or if it has a fence around it, which is.
No, it does not say anything about a fence around it. It says you cannot store outdoors any, any man-made product in any, I can read it to you.
No, Mr. Gomillion.
No, that's why the, this is why the zoning board will understand this. They're familiar with this.
Okay. All right, we have a motion without objection on the floor. Mr. Gomillion, will you please just clarify one thing? We talked this morning, is the fencing, is the requirement for storage beyond the fencing? Do we, can you show?
Yes, in a residential district, you are allowed to store things behind a six-foot privacy fence.
Okay, if you will, just make that available to me and the rest of the board as far as where in our statute that is.
Please. Will you give me just another minute? The county attorney has explained to you that a fence is not a structure, and she, would you define it again, please?
A strict reading of our definition of the word "structure" being any man-made object affixed to property would, at its reading on its face, include a fence. We, to my knowledge, have never told a person they can't fence their vacant property. I think we need to look at changing that definition a little bit. It falls within the spirit of what we do, certainly, to allow people to fence their properties.
All right, now, I would like to read from you the definition section of the Land Development Code.
That's all right, sir. We can all read.
A fence is a structure.
Mr. Sweeney, we've already come to a vote. I appreciate your time, but we're not going back into the fence thing again, so.
I'm going to continue this to the state, saying this county is not enforcing the Land Development Code. You will not allow me to go before a zoning board.
For clarification on this particular item.
I agree. Ms. Jones?
Ms. Jones can coordinate that with him.
Mr. Williamson, would you state that again for Ms. Jones?
I did not hear you. I'm sorry.
I said, "I recommend that we send this back to Planning and Zoning for their clarification on this particular item."
Thank you.
To the staff, we'll be glad to do that. Yes, sir.
On the fence, whether, how we're going to look at it.
No, that I appear before the board. I've got other complaints more than a fence.
All right, thank you, Mr. Sweeney. Appreciate it.
Can I then go before the board on Thursday?
No, sir. We're going to, we're going to discuss that as a board members, unless I'm mistaken.
This isn't fair.
Mr. Sweeney, it's been seen by staff. It's been looked at by the board.
This is what I'm saying. The staff is not reading the Land Development Code.
We've given you that determination. We're not going to start going around the county telling people you can't fence vacant property. I've got vacant property fenced. I'm sure there's other people that have.
Just a minute. You can here. Here's the difference. You can, but not as what's called a permitted use. You have to get consent from the zoning board or the Board of Adjustments, which handles conditional use. Building a fence on a vacant lot, yes, it can be done as a conditional use, but there are procedures then on a conditional reviews that the person goes and says, "Hey, I want to build a fence on my vacant, you know, piece of property." And they say, "Well, you're going to have to go ahead and get a permit for a conditional use."
And that fence has been there how long now?
It's been there since Mr. Bronson built it in 2000, after 2002 and before 2005, because I have pictures taken in 2005. And there are aerial views saying it's been not only fenced, but all this, all these vehicles and stuff stored on it, which is prohibited under the Land Development Code in Section 700, whatever it is, and I've got that here. I just am saying, it's not fair to not allow me to take my appeals of several decisions that were made in a meeting that Mr. Walker called, and I brought all this up in the meeting, and they said, "Hey, you know, you're wrong." I'm just asking to have some knowledgeable people, citizens and property owners like myself, judge whether I've been treated fair or not. That's all I'm asking. I'm in a hostile court here, everybody trying to protect themselves.
All right, if you, if we feel that there's a change necessary, then you'll be notified. But at this point, if we feel there's a change necessary, then you'll be notified, and until that point, we'll not be heard again. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on. Anybody want to take a break? I've got one, two, three, five. Okay, we'll reconvene at, it's 10:45. We'll reconvene in five minutes. All right, it's 10:50, we'll reconvene on item number 11 as a reminder of a public hearing scheduled for 9:30 a.m. Thursday, May 9th, 2013. An ordinance of the County of Santa Rosa, Florida, amended ordinance 2001-03, providing for definitions, dissolving the Santa Rosa County Utility Board, providing oversight requirements for utilities, establishing procedures for issuance of franchise certificates and franchise operations, establishing annual reports of county utilities, regulation of rates for private utilities within the unincorporated areas of the county, and providing for codification and providing an effective date. This will be the subject of that public hearing, and I move it without objection. Hearing none, it passes.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner, I'm sorry.
As I read through this, does this mean that we're considering getting into regulation of rates for private utilities?
You're already in the rates for private, private utilities, you, for, predates me is what we're doing, we've got, we've only got one private utility that's in, in existence in Santa Rosa County now that that affects, and they are being absorbed by the City of Milton. So, in effect, you won't have any. So what this does, that's why we're, there's no reason for the utility board, there's really no reason for any, any regulation. We do the reports, it's done, the, through, through our, our annual comprehensive plan process and a number of other things, this is just, we don't need that, we, we, we're, there's nobody that we regulate anymore after the middle of May, if I'm making any sense. You used to regulate three utilities, it was, there were three small little wastewater utilities that we had, had regulated, and the board had chosen to do that again before I got here regarding, as opposed to having them go through the Public Services Commission. Member-owned utilities, which were, and municipal utilities are, are, are not subject to Public Services Review.
That, that's the difference, and member-owned utilities versus private-owned utilities.
Right, which, and municipally-owned.
Got you.
This is the last, in fact, this, one of the reasons that, is that last utility is no lo, is like I said, it's not going to be in existence, there's no longer any need for them.
Got you.
All right, any other questions? And we'll discuss this again, or open this at 9:30 on Thursday. This time we'll go to the Engineers' Report.
Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry.
We had a couple of add-ons on.
You're right, sorry. Item number 12 is an add-on from Commissioner Lynch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to give the board an update. If you'll recall, we had issues pertaining to Senate Bill 1024, that was an attempt to gain control of the county portion of Restore dollars, specifically the 75% that goes directly to the eight counties. We had concerns about that, there was an amendment filed on the, the floor a couple of weeks ago on, on the Tuesday, that amended the, that, that part of, of 1024 to give us some comfort, but we still weren't where we wanted to be. Senator Evers, along with Senator Latvala and Senator Monford, filed a subsequent amendment to Senate Bill 1024 that struck all references to Restore as it pertains to Triumph Gulf Coast Inc., so that none of the Restore dollars will flow to that, that corporation. So I want to thank Senator Evers for his support for the counties, and I think it would be appropriate for all of us to do that. Beyond that, the only other, the only other reference to Restore that is contained in 1024 at this point really relates to some audit requirements and things of that nature that I think are completely reasonable and expected in any event. So, happy with the way Senator Evers stood up for the counties pertaining to Senate, Senate Bill 1024.
Senator, Commissioner Lynch, thank you for that report. At this time, we do have three additional add-on items from Commissioner Melvin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My first add-on is a proposed resolution that applies to Navar Beach and the connectivity between Navar Beach and Pensacola Beach, and I'll read it for the folks at home that haven't been able to see this. It says, whereas the Santa Rosa County Board of County Commissioners wishes to express its support for the continuance of the roadway on Santa Rosa Island, commonly known as Earl Bowden Way, and whereas Earl Bowden Way traverses the Gulf, Gulf Islands National Seashore and connects Santa Rosa County with Escambia County on Santa Rosa Island, and whereas, without a connection to Escambia County, Santa Rosa residents could only have one egress from Santa Rosa Island, namely via a bridge. Likewise, without a connection to Santa Rosa County, Escambia County residents have only one egress from Santa Rosa Island, namely via a bridge. And whereas, should either county's bridge be, should any county's bridge to the mainland be closed, Earl Bowden Way is the only way to exit the island. And whereas, in the event that Earl Bowden Way is damaged or otherwise made impassable by some natural or other disaster, the expedient repair or replacement and reopening of the road is critical to the safety of the public. And whereas, access to the national seashore is necessary for the continued use and enjoyment thereof by members of the public, and whereas, public safety implores that Earl Bowden Way remain open, now therefore let, therefore be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Santa Rosa County that. The board supports keeping open Earl Bowden Way located within the Gulf Islands National Seashore and connecting Santa Rosa and Escambia Counties in the interest of public safety, passing adopted this, it blanked standard, border plate after that. I would request that we consider this along, and my second item, Mr. Chairman, is a letter from this board, signed by the chair, to the Escambia County Chair, inviting them to adopt the same or a similar resolution on their behalf, and that the counties then jointly forward the resolution to the appropriate parties, which in my judgment would, would be at the national level, our U.S. Senator and Congressman Miller, Senator Nelson, Senator Rubio, Congressman Miller, then the Secretary of Transportation, who I think at this time is Rayla Hood, and then to the Governor of the State of Florida, and to the Secretary, to the, the head of the Florida Department of Transportation, because this is absolutely critical for emergency egress from the island. The last, and, and that's one package. And the second separate item, I would like, do we need to move this to Thursday, the first item? The first item would be the resolution and an invitation letter to Escambia County. I'd like to move that to Thursday without objection.
Okay. I, I just did have a question or maybe a comment to that.
Sure.
I, I recall after either Ivan or Dennis had taken, you know, absorbed a long time to get that done.
And there was some resistance from the park director at that time, that personnel, that person has moved on, we have new personnel in place, but that particular person was of the opinion that it shouldn't be rebuilt.
Okay. And, and I think also some of the discussion was, and the delay was trying to figure out how to build a hurricane-resistant road, which would cost more than replacing it dozens of times. Perhaps, and I certainly agree 100%, perhaps a letter in addition to this to remind them as to why we want this resolution.
I think that would also be appropriate, yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. But I would like to move that to Thursday without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
My last item is regarding another Navar Beach issue, and that's signage. Santa Rosa County has a ordinance that prohibits glass containers in the public areas of the beach, south of the berm, Mom's Beach, et cetera. It doesn't prohibit the vending of containers, which I have no intention of trying to stop, but what we, in my opinion, need to do, what I would ask this board to consider, is that we have signage posted in, in the 7-Elevens and in the various places on the beach that sell glass containers, beer bottles, Coke bottles, whatever. We all saw the, the letter from the Sheriff's Department from the deputy that complained to us about the increase in glass on the beach, and of course, glass on the beach is clearly against the law. Ordinance is done by Santa Rosa County, full force and effect of, of Florida law, so it's against the law to have glass on the beach in the public areas. At one point in time, we had the LED board on the island, had that message streaming all the time, in addition to the other information items, that message used to stream. I think it'd be prudent for us to require signage in the stores that vend beverages in glass, reminding the consumer that they cannot take that product on our beach, and I would like to move that without objection.
100%, perhaps the signage should also say $10 fine for its defense.
Or whatever the board's fine is, I have no idea if we have a fine.
Roger mentioned this as Commissioner Melvin was talking, and I thought it was a good idea that perhaps we want to look at signs at every beach access point, all of our Dune walkovers essentially and other places with this.
And, and on the, and on the pier, nobody, you know, just as long as there's not glass on the pier. Pier, the beaches, Mom's Beach, I think the access points, the walkover points would be excellent additions.
We have them at all of the public access parking lots, the, the one stairwell leading down from the common area of the pier may not have it on that stairwell, and we certainly can get that up. And you say pier as well?
Any, any point, any point of sale in Santa Rosa's portion of the island that sells glass beverages would be required to display a sign that glass is not allowed on the beaches in the public areas. So the public is on notice when they purchase their product, that they cannot take that product. The Mom's Beach, to the, you know, you, you, it's not designed to be on the pier, it's not designed to be on the beaches, it's not designed to be on the soundside, it's just, it's the beach, you don't take glass to the beach.
Putting signs up on our property is a, a pretty quick, easy thing to do. If we are going to require, let's use Tom Thumb as an example, entities like that to display a particular sign, we'll need to enact an ordinance to make that happen.
Then I would include that in my request, that the attorney draft an ordinance for us enacting the requirement for signage in the, in the various points, the various vendors, and I do so without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
If you can do that, that would, thank you, and thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. Good idea.
We can go ahead, and we'll go ahead and put the, the signs, to make sure that our profits.
We can, yeah. All right, anything else? Okay, we'll move now to Engineer's Report. Commissioner, Mr. Engineer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have three items that could come, come before the board, there are a preliminary plat, a final plat, and a paved road and drainage maintenance, and each of these are in various stages, and we'll have a determination on Wednesday.
All right, and we'll move those to Thursday's agenda if necessary, and do so without objection. Hearing none, it passes. Item number one, one under Public Service Committee, Commissioner Lynch.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number one is discussion of award for printing the 2013 Disaster Guides to Panaprint in the amount of $18,503 for 30,000 copies as lowest quote through comparison shopping. I'll move this to Thursday without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item number two is discussion of Rebecca Cato to act as the environmental certifying officer in connection with funding from HUD under federal housing programs. I'll move this to Thursday without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item three is discussion of the Hurricane Housing Recovery Program, or HHRP, second mortgage subordination request for the property located at 2064 Government Court in Gulf Breeze. Unless there are any questions, I'll move this to Thursday without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item four, discussion of amendments to the LDC related to airport zoning as requested by Gulf Power. Mr. Gomilian?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, and I think Commissioner Salter is somewhat familiar with this. The, in going through the effort with Eglin on the J-Luz, there were some points that came to light relative to existing power lines, existing transmission lines, and even some of the requirement for, I believe, sodium vapor lights, the pink-looking lights, some requirement for that. The, when those points were brought to light by Gulf Power, there was some meetings scheduled, and the Navy was brought into those meetings to discuss those issues, and so they have signed off on some potential changes that would really be more of a retrofit for what's already in existence and, and related to lighting. But again, Commissioner Salter, I think, was involved with some of those discussions. But this would be to move forward to the zoning board for development of that, and of course, final approval at some point we come back to this board.
Any questions, comments? Otherwise, I'll move this to Thursday without objection. Hearing none, that passes. Item five, discussion of proposed LDC amendment related to notifying real estate buyers of Land Development Code regulations. Mr. Gomilian?
Yes, there had been a discussion from the, in, in your background, you see the information there, there had been some discuss, discussion by the zoning board, and in particular, the member, Mr. Isaacson, had requested we review additional disclosure at the time of real estate transaction to require some additional information be provided and acknowledged relative to zoning ordinances. They, they do hear these cases where something has been constructed and the owner indicates they were not aware. Typically, those are unpermitted structures of some nature. So they, we're, we're just bringing this to you for your guidance and direction as to whether we should move forward or. to whether we should move forward or, or what your desires might be.
Any questions from the board? If I might, Commissioner.
I see here where the, the realtor would print off a simple form and have the purchaser signature or at least initial that, and that'd be, would be in the packet, hopefully alleviating the I didn't understand or I didn't know ignorance plea, which I understand that too. My question is, how would, you know, that would curtail it some, but does our planning and zoning board or us as a board have access to that closing sale package? So, there becomes an argument there, and then paperwork having to be produced and stuff like that.
It does, and the, I'll point out, you know, we, the military, let's see, the airport zone disclosure form.
Yes, that's one.
That is just attached to the contract for sale and purchase, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. The residential sales disclosure regarding a budding roadways is required to be signed at closing and is recorded with the deed. So, that does lead to additional cost for the parties to the transaction as well, because you have to pay to record that. It's nominal, but nonetheless, it's an additional cost. Rather than have this, if, if we move down this, this road, rather than have it, or impose that requirement on the closing agent, and I'm out, I don't do closings anymore, so, rather than impose that requirement on the closing agent, I would like to see it done the same way as the MAZ disclosure form, where it's simply attached to the contract, rather than having to record zoning brochures with every transaction. I think that'd be an additional cost, additional burden, I'd rather it just, just be part of the contract. That's just me, though. Any thoughts?
Yeah, I would think that's what you need to do, just initial it, and that you've read it, and be put in the packet, and like I said, it'd have to be recorded, just for information to try to help folks out, and some will say they read, read it and didn't read it, et cetera, you know, but anyway, it's, it's just helping, you know, a measure of trying to help them.
Then noting that, I'll move this to Thursday without objection.
Hearing now passes.
All right, that ends our Public Service Committee report.
That concludes Public Services.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Lynch. At this time, we'll move to Public Works Committee, Commissioner Williamson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, we have two items today. The first is discussion of resurfacing Langley Street, which is the entrance road to the west gate of Whiting Field at an estimated cost of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars to be funded from franchise fees for road and drainage, as recommended by the Road and Bridge Department. Any questions or discussion? Now, I recommend we move this to Thursday, the general without objection.
Hearing now passes.
And the last item, discussion of requests from City of Milton for open cutting and patching of county roadways along Ward Basin Road for the installation of a sanitary sewer forced main, and this is also the recommended route that the Road and Bridge Department has stated, that I don't think they have a problem with that, is that correct, Mr.? Yeah. So, I would recommend we move this Thursday, the general without objection.
You do?
No.
Okay. My question, if I might, Mr. Chairman, is it says roadways, you know, so this, it would not be a single cut, it would be multiple.
There, there's a list of the roadways in the backup, is the ones that are affected. It's just crossings, as, as they go along, parallel with the Ward Basin Road.
Mr. Chairman, it would be seven roads that would be cut, and they would not only patch those road cuts back, but also resurface over those areas, and so we, we're confident that it'll, it will get a good, a good repair job, and it's almost a necessity for those, to make those road cuts, because if they do what our ordinance typically require and bore underneath the roads, they're going to be, the sanitary sewer's going to be at such a depth that they could not service those side roads.
Yeah, some of it's forced main, some of it's gravity, so they, you know, force height, that's the main concern, sewer. I recommend we move this Thursday, the general without objection.
Hearing now passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Thank you. This time, we'll move to Budget and Finance Committee, Commissioner Melvin.
Yes, sir, we have four items this morning. Item number one is discussion of budget amendment two thousand and thirteen dash one twenty-three in the amount of thirty-three thousand three hundred dollars to fund the promotion of the Navar Beach Singer-Songwriter Festival, amount of eighteen thousand dollars, and the two thousand and thirteen fireworks on Navar Beach for the remainder of the fifteen thousand three hundred dollars, as approved at the April twenty-fifth, two thousand and thirteen regular Board of County Commissioners meeting, and these funds will come from the tourist development fund, and I recommend we move this to Thursday without objection.
All right, hearing none passes.
Item number two is discussion of the budget amendment two thousand and thirteen dash one twenty-four in the amount of one million nine hundred and, one million ninety-seven thousand dollars to fund the construction of the Tiger Point Community Center from the reserves for contingencies in District Five Projects Fund and the Capital Projects Fund, as approved by the board November the eighth, two thousand and twelve. I recommend we move this to Thursday without objection.
Hearing now passes.
Item number three is discussion of budget amendment two thousand and thirteen dash one twenty-five in the amount of one hundred and fifty-six thousand nine hundred and eighty-six dollars, which will fund the scope of work and fee from the, for the Geosink consultants for the design of the sea cell at the central landfill, as approved at the April twenty-fifth, two thousand and thirteen Board of County Commissioners regular meeting, and the funds will come from the landfill fund, and I recommend we move this to Thursday without objection.
Hearing now passes.
Item number four is discussion of the county expenditures and check register, I reviewed those expenditures and have my questions satisfied, signed off on that, and put it on your desk, Mr. Chairman, and it's ready for your signature. I recommend we move item number four to Thursday without objection.
Hearing now passes.
And that concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner Melvin. All right, at this time, I'll open it up to any public comments, public hearings, I'll ask if there's any other comments or questions from members of the board or staff, county, anybody? Not seeing none, then we are adjourned.